Okay.
Okay, you're recording. Go ahead. It's seven oh two.
Okay, the meeting was called order seven oh two. Mark, can you read the rules of conduct?
Happy to. This is a web based call. We are operating under the following procedure. The session is being both video and audio recorded. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting will generally be kept on video. We'll keep the video on themselves throughout the meeting. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair for public input before the meeting. Please enter your e- please use email and send your comments through public input at Columbia C T dot org within twenty four hours before the meeting. There will be no public audience decisions in this budget workshop.
Correct. Although if there are comments, we will try to address those before the hearing or during the hearing.
Okay.
Pleasure allegiance. I keep forgetting to strike that from the minutes while we're in Zoom. So let's just take a moment of silence and just think about what's happening in this crazy world. Say your own pledge, your prayer, whatever's appropriate. Thank you. Proven minutes. March seventeenth. Either a comment or a motion.
I moved that we approved the minutes of March seventeenth.
Second, is there a second?
I'll second.
Move the second, any discussion? Okay, then we'll vote. I will abstain because I didn't wasn't there for the entire meeting. Other than that, are there any no votes or abstentions? And the motion passes with one abstention. New business update on American Rescue Plan. I guess there are a couple of things. I think Mark last meeting you gave us some indication of the size of the numbers. Can we go over that again?
Yes, um, let's see. Do I have my? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. For the town, it's five hundred thirty one thousand eighty four dollars. For the education allotment, it's two hundred and four thousand. I did confirm today that those that two hundred and four is not part of the five thirty one. They're two separate figures. And Talon County is twenty nine million, two hundred thirty one thousand four ten to be dotted up per capita, which would give us over a million. But I I think there still has to be a lot more discussion as to how that's going to be distributed. So we don't have any clear uh sense for the county money.
That's not a million on top of the five thirty one is.
It it's on top of.
Yes.
Yes.
Now that's for the whole county, right? So how many towns?
Talon County has over a hundred fifty thousand people in it. And then you know, we have five thousand four hundred. So it'll give us like a million four. But I I don't believe that number is really going to come to us. I'd I'd be shocked if that happened.
So did you I we received um a little bit of material about how the money could be used. And it sounded like infrastructure and capital projects out of our money, obviously not the education money would be appropriate. So I'm wondering at what point we look at the things that we've wanted to do and the things that we have planned to do and see how we can use that money. I mean, we have until twenty till December thirty first, twenty twenty four to use it.
So the caveat, I talked to CCM today, Ernie, if I may.
Yes, please.
What they're stating is that the Courtney with the federal money, which is a whole nother discussion, is coming through and having webinars, which will join and listen. But it sounds like a lot of the federal money is going to be earmarks or coming through uh for major transportation projects that are already in the cog or council of governments as in the tip program, which is the transportation program. So we don't have anything that would qualify for that. Unless they do earmarks and I work with Kathy Austin and she makes a recommendation to Congressman Courtney for my ten towns. This is what I'd like to reach town, you know, something like that might happen. So that that's down the road for the state money.
Can I stop you for a second? Is that a is that the you're talking about a separate pool of money, the money that's going to the state?
Yes.
That's okay.
Yes, so the Courtney money is called infrastructure highway transit project designated money and also he'll be also doing what's called community project funding, which is where we might more more appropriately apply federal money in community projects. For state money coming through, the legislation has to still meet and decide the guidelines and CCM is desperately trying to get the state to understand that holding us to water sewer and broadband infrastructure upgrades is not going to help your rural towns at all. And holding us to loss of revenue is not going to help us a lot. You know, I can't spend five hundred thousand in loss of revenue. But if they open it up to capital projects that help the community to get you outside uh to get you rescue trucks, to get you generators, to get you air packs. That all might work with the federal money. If they want to focus on highways and they allow us to upgrade our public works garage, that'd be great. You know, that would be focused on transit. So there's there's a lot of unknowns here that have not come together with any clear definition from legislature. And we're hoping those definitions have come within the next couple of weeks. They have a deadline of May sixteenth to have everything figured out, but we're hoping they'll realize that our budgets will all be done by then or could be.
So I
Now, go ahead, Jeff.
How how about the Culver and the bridge that we're we're looking at doing?
Well.
Fall into it.
The one problem with the bridge is it's it's already funded with federal money. And Culver is already got I tied a steep grant to it, which has already got state money tied to that. So.
Could we work that into the loss of money somehow?
Because I don't know. These are all all unknowns that we're going to be okay, really focused on figuring out. Um, and they might even allow us to put in multiple requests and then let them pick which one they want.
Okay.
Which would be good too. Instead of just one and they say yes or no, let me put in four ideas and they decide which makes most sense towards the requirements.
So it sounds like we should proceed on the work that we have to do tonight and going forward. With that sort of sitting in a parking lot while we wait for more information because it's not there isn't any point in speculating how it might impact things in the next six weeks because we're really not going to know and it's good for three years. So um, more than three years. So.
I had a quick question on you said that town is getting five hundred plus thousand dollars. And the Board of Ed is getting two hundred thousand dollars, but they're talking about and we're getting additional funding down the road. And but you're talking about getting funding and 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 different timeframes. When would that five hundred thousand dollars become available or would a portion of that five? In other words, can we spend it for this upcoming fiscal year?
I believe what I heard tonight was half of it would be available in June of two thousand twenty one and half in June of two thousand twenty two.
Okay, and is the same is the same true for the money for the board event?
I I would assume both are coming in half and half, but that we don't have specifics unless Maria knows more.
No, not not yet. I mean, we only know about the S R two funds, but we haven't heard, you know, about the rescue funds and how they will be, when they'll be allocated or how. I assume through, you know, the Connecticut State Department of Ed or O P M, but we haven't heard the specifics yet.
One big concern I have, Ernie, is if part of the rules are that you can't reduce your budget or your pension, you can't use it for pensions and you can't use it to reduce your tax taxes for the residents. I'm just wondering if since all this is going to take a long time to come together, we don't. My recommendation is send it back to the Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen to come back to five pack by pulling some of their capital out that could be funded by some of this money. Get it out of the budgets in case a rule says you can't supplant your budget. And see how it all falls together. Uh, we can always come back together in July if if we get nailed that nothing, nothing applies or it's really hard to spend the money. But I think they're going to want us spending the money and getting it into the economy and helping the towns. Why else would we be having all this cash available?
Where is the wording that says we can use it for capital projects?
Infrastructure.
That's in the infrastructure and in the community, community project funding, which is um.
Oh, wouldn't that be Rec Park?
It'd be Rec Park. Uh, community project funding could be the fire department. But here's what's weird. I have I have member directed community project funding guides from Larson, from Courtney, from Hayes. So I imagine I focus on Courtney.
Yeah.
Are they all different?
Yeah, they all came up their own.
That's very helpful.
So Mark, Mark, I have a question.
Yes.
Right. Um, so our, you know, we're slated to have our budget voted on and approved before May sixteenth. Do we have it? Do we have any mechanisms for us to delay that and push that meeting back? So if I recall correctly, we were able to last year. We had some flexibility in when we would approve the budget because of COVID.
I think we have a charter requirement that the budget within a timeframe. I I don't have it at my fingertips.
But I thought the executive order didn't. Wasn't there something about the executive order last year that superseded some of the you know, some of the charters that towns have and the rules that the towns have?
One confusing aspect is that they just expanded the all executive orders through May twenty. But we're not positive if it's really all of them or some of them. Uh, because they're kind of silenced still on, does that give five pack the ability to approve the budget without going to a town meeting? Now, we've scheduled the school gymnasium for our town medium, so we could have social distancing, wear masks and vote. And I have not seen in Columbia a town meeting with over a hundred people at it. So I think you could have an in person town meeting. I know Hotnam just tried to have a combination virtue. It was a Zoom meeting as a town meeting. It was a disaster because on Facebook, everybody told them to go to the school for a hybrid meeting, which wasn't on the call. And so they are all in the parking lot on their cell phones, trying to vote on a meeting that took forty five minutes to register everybody through the registrars to vote with traffic noise in the background and a lot of fighting and fighting through chat over some controversial issues. So it was bad.
So I I'm I think that I'm in favor of your suggestion about pulling some capital things out that we think we may get reimbursed for if we're pressed to have our budget approved prior to the sixteenth deadline that they'll have guidance on that. But the caveat being that if we can extend it out later, I think we should have a discussion about doing that. So we can have clear numbers and understand. So if that's feasible, what is what are people's thoughts on pressing out the town vote on the budget?
I think if we could put it off, if we're allowed to do that, that would make sense. But I think we unless we know that we can do that, we have to go ahead and make some some decisions as Brian is saying.
Yeah, absolutely. But but then again, if so, I think it should be something pretty simple. We can find out now on whether we're permitted to do that or not.
Yes, I'm I'm sure we can determine that.
I'm sure that's going to be one of my outlier opinions again, but um I think that given the amount of time ahead of us, we have to spend the money that delaying the budget, we we can't delay it that long between May sixteen and the start of the fiscal year, the six weeks.
But it's one, but it's one week difference. I think we our budget is on like the eleventh or something like that. So it's not that necessarily will be weeks ahead. We could maybe do it, push it a week.
Information on May sixteenth, it's going to actually direct planning. I don't think it's not likely that it's going to be so specific that.
Okay, I just I just thought it would be helpful because, you know, the budget that was presented to us has quite a significant increase in the mill rate. And I know we're going to need to be, what's that?
It doesn't have a significant increase, does it?
Right now.
We're pulling it from the contingency. I thought, okay, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, well, we're that's what we need to all talk about, you know, right? As as presented to us, it would raise the mill rate three percent, three points. So we need to figure out how to make that budget work. So the more if we had a better understanding, it's just my opinion, it would be better to know. It's not a, you know, we can plan as as Mark had said, that maybe the idea is to pull back some budget, you know, capital projects in the budget as it was presented to us and then come up with revised numbers. That probably makes a lot of sense, but.
The problem with that is that I looked at the numbers. I hope I didn't broke my calculations wrong. But it looks like we have a very significant transfer from general fund this year if we want to stay in the same mill rate range. And I took a quick look and said, maybe that's okay if in future years, you know, if this is a rough year and next year has less capital requirements, maybe we can do that and and smooth things out. But the next few years look even worse in terms of capital. Uh, maybe we should talk about that too because if you look at the amounts allocated to capital this year, it's like a million. If you look out further in the future, like in twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, there are some big numbers in there and we need to talk about what those things are and talk about long range, not just a single year.
Right.
You looking at it, Jeff? I've got my charter. Just seeing if we can push it out.
Well, wasn't that an executive that was about COVID last year, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't so much that we were able to push it out. It said, the Board of Finance was able to set the mill rate. So or five pack was able to go right. I think there was also an extension on the deadline. We might have met the original deadline, but I think we could have gone farther uh later if we wanted to. Well, yeah, if they extended, but I don't believe our charter allows us to for us to extend it. Well, the executive. That would be the. Yeah.
Well, that, yeah, because our charter doesn't allow us to set the mill rate either. Correct?
Well, we present what we expect for a mill rate. Well, we the budget and then the mill rate set after.
Go ahead.
Charter does allow us to set the mill rate. It doesn't allow us to approve the budget without town vote.
Correct. And but the executive order did.
Right. So what we're questioning is how long is the executive order going to stay in effect? Because it sounds like it hasn't been definitely stated that it's being extended. Is that what you said, Mark?
It was definitely extended to May twentieth, the executive orders, but we haven't gotten clarity on, is it all of them or some of them?
That happened last night.
Yes.
Yeah. When you don't know, but when what did you tell us about the Talon County money when that might be available? I'm thinking the same.
Yeah, so I'm still waiting for clarity on that. I'm hoping because some of those bigger years you're noticing in the capital five year plan, Ernie, was really tied to DPW with the need for more um storage for vehicles and in annex. Um, I'm hoping somehow with all this American Rescue Plan spending that we could use it for those big projects, plus the fire department, plus Rec Park. So if if we could do all that with a a game plan for three years, uh, that that would really help out our capital. It would smooth out our capital spending. So we don't have these bumps.
And you were talking about one point four million dollars there in the town and county.
Right. Yeah, that would build one nice public work garage.
Had to do more than that. It would build a very nice. Garage. Yeah.
But he also said it's unlikely we're going to get that amount.
I I just find it hard to believe. I I I really think all of a sudden it'll 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 change the earmarks from pure per capita to veering to the cities for major projects.
But I didn't think that the cities were going to get forty five billion dollars either, and that seems to have happened.
Right. Yeah. So I we're all in kind of shock as to how this is supposed to happen with our budget cycle being in process at this moment.
Okay.
That was fun.
I'm putting my wish list together right now.
And you know what? Another big project is the school looking at their air conditioning needs. You know, that a lot of the capital could head towards that.
Oh, absolutely.
And solve that issue.
The COVID issue. Yeah.
Pull it out of the budget.
Our challenge, though, Mark, is that the E S S C R funds that we know at this moment, and I'm not really sure yet what the rescue funds will be earmarked for, but it's pretty specific to filling academic and social emotional behavioral gaps that have been created because of COVID. So in if we had, say, a need with our HVAC system, I think we could earmark some, but I would say if we look at what the real needs are, it's it's more about student support and intervention.
And now you're talking about the two hundred and four.
Yeah, yeah, the two hundred and four. I know.
Gear towards education. I'm talking about the money coming through capital.
Beautiful. Thank you. That's lovely. Thank you.
We could work together to come up with.
Great. I just wanted to make sure we were clear because I have to fill those gaps. Thank you.
They want your money to fill the need for the kids to catch up during this COVID gap.
Exactly. Thank you.
Well, and that that's a great idea, but you know, farther on in this um paperwork, it tells us not to create programs and positions uh that we're going to have to keep on going because once the money runs out, the programs or the people need to disappear too.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's why we need to create a multi year plan. Nah, that's why we have to spread it out over a few years so that it's not such a cliff at the end. Which we're working on now.
Okay, anything else? Potential town grants. It's probably on the agenda for a reason. Is there an update on that? Five point two.
Wait a minute. Bev, what were we? What were we thinking about with that?
Mark, that was you talking about the community project grant and the.
Everything we've talked about. Okay.
More information or specifics on it. You're supposed to talk about it.
I I think we've covered everything that I have knowledge about. Unless Bev, you have anything new you've uncovered.
Oh.
Okay, we're done with that, Ernie.
Okay. General discussion of the budget, I guess Judy yelling us that that's what we ought to be doing. So let's go. No, actually, why don't we do this? Uh, is there any new information from the finance department? You know, we were looking at the health costs and I don't know if there was anything else that uh might have just been a change in numbers because we had new information. So.
Um, yes, so um, we'll know more by next week. Um, um, when hopefully they'll have both the vote of the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen on the new plan. Um, we're not giving details yet, but based on the numbers that we have currently, um, I can probably bring this town down about sixty five thousand dollars more. And the Board of Ed can be decreased about a hundred and forty three, a hundred and forty four thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah, and we should have our negotiations completed and hopefully Monday night we'll we'll take care of that process. Just have a little more discussion to be had.
So I can have those numbers updated for next week. Once I go over a couple of things, Mark and Maria.
Was there anything else like that? I don't.
Significant changes. Um, no, I think there's been no changes to capital. Um, and everything else has been has been stays as is for now. Um.
We do have Bev. I don't know if Ernie wanted to know any challenge that we've become aware of, which we have to just look at over the next
Yes, you probably should mention that little.
Yeah, so we do have some additional special education costs that have we've become aware of in the past two weeks. So I'll be looking at those expenses over the next few days. So by next week, we should be able to have a a stronger sense of where we're sitting and what that impact to the budget would be. Not really positive at the moment, but I'll have firm numbers for you next week.
Out placements?
Uh, no specialized services. And we have, well, actually, I shouldn't say no, because the last time I came to you, we had already had two out placements added to the budget since the Board of Ed saw the budget first time, and now it is more specialized programming for students moving in.
Uh, that sort of ties in, I guess, our excess cost grant. Was it current year or last year or next year is?
So next year is going to be quite less. Basically, the changes that between what I found out with Maria and the special ed director is, a lot of these are not going to be excess costs. They're below. So what you see in the budget is an estimate based on the students that we are aware of who are going to exceed, who are going to have the excess costs. So so it is coming way down. So these are all.
Like double edged. That's a double edged sword, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, higher cost, more excess back.
How were special ed outplacement handle during the COVID isolation period?
Uh, some were remote, you know, for the period of time where we were all remote, and then some students um were brought back as we were this school year. Um, majority, I think, full time, but it was a challenge for students, especially from March through. Um, you know, the summer is many of our students in placements have summer services as well. Um, but they are back back in now. But of course, we have to, we have to pay no matter what.
Maria, are you going to do over the summer to help the kids around learning stuff?
Yes, we're, yeah, we're going to do some additional summer intervention. We'll also have additional intervention staff. Uh, and then some probably consulting work around um with board certified behavior analysts. We'll have to bump up that 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 cost, which is easier to uh decrease later on because it's not a specific staff person that we hire. So, yeah, well, we have quite a bit to address over the next, you know, couple of years, but I think the grant funds can help us to to kind of. But I think the grant funds can help us to kind of level that out over a three-year period and not, you know, attach all funds to the first year.
Anybody in Five Pack have questions on any aspect of the budget?
Yeah, Bev, my pencil wasn't fast enough. You said you'd be able to bring the town down 68,000?
The town would be about 65,000 for the health insurance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, Judy?
For questions or comments?
Anything.
Well, I don't know if we're ready to start talking about the mill rate, I would think that we have.
No.
To get clear that we're in support of all these expenditures. The I mean, I feel like the things that the Board of Selectmen has put together and proposed are not frivolous. I don't think that there's anything on this that sort of doesn't meet with my approval in terms of needing to be done. So that's where I would, would end up.
Done and funded are two different things, though.
Well, yeah.
I have a comment agreeing with Judy. I, I think we should have a goal of trying to keep the mill rate increases zero. Right, I don't know if that's feasible. But let's look at everything very carefully and have a goal of either keeping the mill rate increase as zero or make it minimal. So, that's all, at least that's where I think I'm coming from.
Isn't, isn't that always the goal? Keep it minimal? Or zero?
Well, that's what we've been able to do, but we're having something different this year.
Can we walk it back?
What's that?
Could we walk it back and go beyond zero?
You mean keep a decrease in the way?
Yeah, decrease the mill rate.
It doesn't sound like we're gonna be able to do that.
No, I don't think so either.
Right, and I don't know if that's a good idea, because then you generally have to bring it back up and
Right.
People don't remember what it was before they
Too much of a yo-yo, I agree.
Too much silence.
Yeah, well, you know, I think we need a little more information before we can really start. You know, I got a couple of things, and I know that Dick will jump down my throat here, but, you know, like the air conditioning system, I, I might wanna hold off on that right now and see if we do get funding, you know, from the Talon County or the feds to cover that type of thing. And while the generator for the senior center could be covered, you know, under the $531,000 from the town side, it not necessarily have to be put into our budget. Am I making any sense here? Trying to spend their money instead of our money? So to speak?
You know, I'm, actually, I'm a little, I know that when they passed the stimulus plan, one of the goals was to make sure all school systems had adequate ventilation to deal with COVID stuff and make sure that there's adequate ventilation in schools. Doesn't the air conditioning fit into that?
It does. The, but it would, if we were to do the whole school, we have to find out first of all what the total cost would be, and it would far surpass what we have available to us. So we would have 100,000 roughly with the SR2 funds, and then we have another 204 for us, which for us would be, in my plan at the moment, before I bring to the Board of Ed, would be applying roughly $100,000 per year for three years, so that we are supporting, filling those gaps for students. So I wouldn't be putting, my recommendation would not be putting in air conditioning over those services for students, if those, that's where the funding needs to come from, if that makes sense.
Well, we're talking about getting additional funds, maybe up to 1.4 million for county funds.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be wonderful, if that could be the case.
But could we, could we let someone like Courtney know that we need additional money for air conditioning? Because we don't have it.
Yep.
And see if he can come up with something on top of the $200,000 that you're gonna get.
I, I believe we can, and I know, I am aware of a number of school districts that did not fully expend the, the funds that were provided to them the la, the last go-round, because many of the schools are receiving, in some of the smaller districts, 700,000 to multimillion dollar, you know, grants from the state. So there also may be additional funds that are sitting there that they're willing to reallocate at some point. So I do think we can make some additional requests. I know Bev and I did that before, and it helped out a little bit with Kathy Dempsey providing this.
Yeah, I think we should make that a priority, actually.
Great.
Well, you
Happy to do that.
Yeah, the last meeting we had, Maria was touting how good the air handling system and ventilation is at the school. So there's a big difference between, you know, having good ventilation and air circulation versus spending millions of dollars for an air conditioning system that really, what do we need? At 10, 12 days a year, where it really gets unbearably hot? We're still doing a great job with ventilating, and I don't know if we've actually thought about what it's gonna cost to maintain an air conditioning system that size that's required to do to school every year. Is that gonna be $40,000 a year to maintain that system?
But if we're gonna, if we're gonna have kids come to school over the summer to catch up, we're gonna need an air conditioning system.
You know, but that's what this year
Back then, I have to continue for not just this summer, but future summers too.
I don't know, you'd have them out in the fields picking crops.
Back in the day?
Back in the day.
I used to walk a mile to the bus stop.
Yeah, uphill both ways. No, I was only uphill one way.
Okay, there you go.
Got the roll home. No, I just, you know, it's just the way it's been. I don't know that it's necessary if we can provide adequate air movement. But, no, I understand, it's nice.
Well, it's more than nice. It may be necessary in the future.
We have more and more days that are over 90 degrees. It used to be 10 days a year, it was 23 days last year, it's
By the day, that's really nothing in the scheme of 365, I mean, come on. No, I don't run it, you know, I have one air conditioner in the whole house, and if I turn it on five times a year, I've used it a lot.
I have no air conditioner. I'm not a opponent, but I'm saying.
So maybe we should take a vote by all the people that have or don't have central air conditioning.
We have air conditioning in our house, and my wife runs it all the time.
Oh, well, you know. I happen to I happen to run my house, not the wife.
Oh, my God.
I, I think if we can make an air
I'm just playing with it, he knows that.
If we could make air conditioning work, we should. That's, I think, what it boils down to. If we can make it work, we should.
And I'd be happy to speak to the benefits, if you would like to do that at some point.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
So what's the total cost of air conditioning? Is this 100,000 roughly a good estimate?
No. We have a feasibility study that we're paying for out of this year's appropriated budget, which is up to $17,000 for the study, and the study should be coming back to us in April. So we'll have a firmer number to see just what is possible. Because I think that is still an open question of what would that be? A full school-wide system, or are we talking about doing zones at a time? But we won't have that information probably for a few weeks. So I was thinking that 100,000 was a placeholder, which may just be a contribution toward a project, depending on what the feasibility is.
Well, how about if we just fund the study for the 20,000 and, you know, let the other 80 ride? You know, till that we actually, you know, get some real numbers to decide what, what we're gonna do. You know, I, personally, I don't, I'm not saying that I'm against it. I just wanna make sure we have realistic numbers that the town can do and the taxpayers can do. You know, so, yeah, do I believe air conditioning would be great and wonderful? Yeah, but if, you know, if it's a real burden on the town, I think we gotta consider that.
Maria, did they, did they finally do away with the idea of individual units? Is that no longer on the table?
It wouldn't, I won't say it's not on the table. It probably still is in the background, because right now we are using the individual units to move around for students and staff who need it, and just to keep the mold and stuff from growing in the, the bottom level.
Yeah, the bottom level, that gets
Yeah, but I think the initial thought was to have, it, the question was, they don't believe that certain sections of the school could put ducts in between, you know, up between the ceiling and the roof. So that they were talking about like the ductless split units, heating, cooling kind of things. And that could be, you could say, all right, we're gonna do the second floor, the hottest area first, and we could just do that section. I think we'd like to avoid those individual units, because they are the repair, the maintenance, the storage, and then replacement every, you know, so many years. That was not the, the ideal choice at this point, but we'll know more in a couple of weeks.
How about a crazy idea? That we put something out to the parents and ask for air conditioners? Could we do that? I mean, I wanted seniors to paint the senior center, because it's empty right now. You know?
Well, that, that's Jeff, that, it was talked about, I believe, and there is an issue with fitting in the windows.
Yeah, you have to build around them. It's not just It doesn't fit, it doesn't, it doesn't cool the whole space. They cool about 500 square feet. I think the, the classrooms are larger than that, and it's really just to kind of keep the, some humidity level down. But you are building around the, you're building wooden platforms around the air conditioner, so they fit in the windows that are in schools.
Okay, I'm gonna cut you off, Jeff, unless we have a feasibility study and the recommendations from the
Louie, have you looked into those wall units like we have in the town hall?
Yeah, that's called an air conditioner discussion, and get back to the budget in general.
Okay.
Because that might be the recommendation of the experts. We're paying them, and you, you already have the money to pay for the study, right?
We do. We do.
Okay.
So we're set.
So I'm just assuming those guys are smarter than I am, so I'll wait for their
Yeah, they're the engineers, I'm not, so we let them do it.
Right, Jeff, they're smarter than you two?
They're definitely cooler, yep.
Okay, what other, I guess I was curious, by this time, we usually have some numbers related to the current year in the budget. By that, I mean variants, since from what we budgeted. Is there anything significant that we suspect might go into that current year variance column?
I already, I already put some of those numbers in there. For the Board of Ed, we haven't quite gotten there yet. We'll know more probably next week. So there could be, I'm not gonna say, because we gotta work through some numbers. The town, I put in right now what I definitely knew between the revenues and stuff, so I'll work on that for next week about the expenditure lines, but definitely the revenue, there are some issues with the ECS grants coming in short 50, the interest is coming in short, about, what was it, 75 or 80,000? The special ed excess cost, cost grant is down definitely about 60, 70,000. I have to look at that. But the collections today is pretty much on target for budget as of today. It was 97.57. Carol sent that out today. So she's got some more money to collect, she believes it's coming in, maybe another couple hundred thousand by the end of the year. So that'll cover the other revenue loss that we're having. And I think there is a couple of lines, I might have put some projections in based on what I could see, because there are some surpluses in the group insurance line, and but other than that, it, I'll, I'll try to update it all for next week.
Okay. This is horrible, I never knew how much I appreciated you always printing everything out and handing it to me.
It helps, doesn't it?
I miss that too. I mean, I'm used to having all that information on hand at these meetings, so.
All you gotta do is hit print.
Right, I printed mine.
Yeah, I printed mine too, which, I'm gonna send you a bill for all the paper and ink.
But actually, if anybody wants a packet, just call my office and we'll have it available, or we'll mail it out to you.
Good.
COVID fund costs.
Okay.
Exactly.
Just, just another thing, on the track design and the upgrade, does that sound like something we can put into the COVID? I mean, it's 50, you're asking for $50,000, you're gonna get 204, so that's like a quarter of what you're getting. So
We have to wait, again, we have to, the feasibility study's coming back also on the track in April, so we'll have a better sense of what that cost is, but that's really a placeholder as well. It's not, it, it, the cost would be substantially more than that, and, yeah, and I wouldn't, it would not be my choice to put something in place of services to students. That would have to go in the funds first.
Yeah, no, I, I'm with you with the services to the students. So, so it's, you know, some of the other stuff, while it's not all fluff, you know, I, I see the, the need there. I think we might need to forego some of these other things for the services of the students, because of what's, what's transpired.
Yeah, thank you.
But just so, if you look at the fire department, you know, if, if we have till 2024, and we could justify the self-contained breathing apparatus over two years, that's 250,000. The rescue truck, we might need 220,000. The SUV, 50,000. The forestry 105, if we don't get that grant, that's 150,000. So there's a lot of money and capital with the fire department over the next three years. We've got a lot of money with the Public Works, and we have a lot of money with Rec Park. So I don't think we have any trouble spending it if we could justify qualifying the spending to fit the parameters that we don't understand yet.
Well, one parameter that's clear, they don't want any of it back.
I would hope so.
It's always, that's always the one thing.
Can't we just get a printing machine? If you don't, you won't get it. I mean, this is crazy, isn't it? I mean, anyway.
Let's talk about timing. Okay, we're gonna, let's say best case scenario, we do get, what was it, a million four, or what was that number?
We're not sure yet.
Yeah.
A million four, is that?
And another 500,000, that's almost a million nine. So best case scenario, if we wanted to, if we got all of that, we'd have to spend it over, what, a three-year period?
Right.
Now, what do, in your judgment, would we have to complete a project or complete a purchase by the end of that three-year period?
I believe so.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think of an approach, and usually is divide by two or divide by three. If we're getting a million nine, and we said, let's see if we can come up with a strategy for using a third of that every year over the next three years. Would that be sort of like a good starting approach to say, okay, if we had, I can't divide by three, 600,000 over three years? I mean, you could have some flexibility to tweak annual usage, but we have to start somewhere, so why don't we do, see if we can do, what if we got all that money, and what if we decided, or first stab? What would it look like if we tried to spend it equally over three years? Is that something that makes sense, or I'm just trying to get something in front of us that we can look at and say, that's dumb, and come up with some reasonable changes?
Ernie, should we use a lower number? And then if we get, we actually do get all this money, we could throw a chunk at something?
You could come up with scenario A, scenario B, scenario Z. But I'm saying let's start somewhere.
Okay.
Well, we soon have more information on how it can be spent, even if we don't know the exact amounts we're getting, because that would be good to have before we start doing our scenarios, but
I'll know more after meeting with Kathy Austin on Monday. So, all right, I'll relay that to the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday and to all of you on Wednesday. Or if I know anything right away, get it out in an email.
Okay.
Okay.
So it seems like not much we can talk about right now, because it's so much So it seems like not much we can talk about right now because it's so much information that we're gonna be getting in the next week or so.
Correct.
Okay.
Mark, do we need to keep our attorney in the loop on this or? I, you know, we're interpreting.
Then, yes, because, um, the, the good news is our town attorney, um, who is now Rich Roberts with Henry. So, uh, retiring, uh, Rich is, represents the towns for, um. With the executive board of the governor's office when they're doing all their executive orders. So he's there, cost is there, CCM's there. So, um, he's, he's the one advocating that. You either keep the executive order in place that BIPEC can pass and set a mill rate or. Just have a referendum town meeting, but this hybrid coming over the computer to voting system cannot happen. We're not ready for that. So that was last discussion I had with him. The, another concern is that the land use law is coming at us, but we don't know where that's gonna end up.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I, I was gonna ask if you knew anything about that and where that is heading. That's too, too gray right now?
Yes, it's still gray. Um, I, I don't know if the rural towns might just ignore it. Uh, cause they don't seem to understand that we're limited with septic, no public water and no. Uh, automated transportation systems and that you can't just plot four apartments on an acre. Um, so we'll, we'll see what happens there.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a hard sell, Brian. I know there are a lot of people writing testimony about it that are in favor of it. From the small towns, it's something you could do if you wanted to, uh, you know, go in and. Volunteer some testimony, tell them you're on a board of finance and this just doesn't work in our town.
I don't think they're listening right now, but, um.
Yeah, I don't think they took, they were not taking, I heard they were blacking out a lot of the online testimonials.
Write the testimony and send it in because it gets in there. All right, what you might not be able to do. Is go on like we are and actually present a testimony or testify in front of the committee. But if you write it, it goes in.
That, does anybody ultimately read it? I mean, Connecticut has more small, more people living in small towns than.
But, you know, we can call Kathy Austin, we can call Timmy Acker, you can call and tell, and they listen. I, I mean, you know, Kathy Austin's been at my dining room table. And I'm not a Democrat, but she'll, she'll come out and listen and talk to you.
Well, I think she knows the issues of the small towns for us.
Well, some of them anyway, more than others.
But Mark, we have no, we don't have clarity on any of that at this point.
No. I'm actually the chairman for CCM of the land use department, so I've been staying abreast of everything. And, um, what they're saying now is that the legislation is still real mushy and it keeps evolving. Um, so it's come out of the house, but they think it's gonna still get rev- uh, modified considerably.
Okay, good, thank you.
You guys just confused me. Are we saying? I guess when I first read this, I read the restrictions and said Columbia can't spend any money. Then down below it, it said the. Uh, you have lots of flexibility in what you can spend it for. And I thought the first part of our discussion was, yeah, you can spend it on, on almost anything capital. Are you guys back to, no, you can't? It has to be water or sewer or?
No, we're, we don't know, Bernie. We're, we're waiting for some clarification. All we have is real general guidelines. So this is totally up in the air. And what we were just talking about is legislation that will override our zone, our pub, our, um. Planning and zoning boards and force them to change their regulations as to uh density building within. Uh, lots in the town of Columbia.
And the usage of open space and what you, the town can and can't spend money on related to that.
Right.
Okay. So bottom line is, we don't know anything.
Right. Sounds that way.
We have a theme.
Oh, wait a second, I guess.
Right.
We, we will adapt quickly and nimbly as we find stuff.
That sounds really good.
So Bev's gonna tweak the numbers as best she can, if justified, and Mark will let us know what he finds out on Monday. If anything, is there anything else we can do except wait for more input?
Ernie, do you want me to ask the board selectman to come back with some recommendations? On the, um, on the, that they sent forward?
Sure, why not?
What, well, are they gonna know any more than we know?
I don't know. I'm hoping, I hope every day, all of a sudden, our legislators realize that we're all in the middle of a budget process. And guidelines would be very helpful. But I don't know.
Yeah, if they have input, I, you know, would certainly be nice to. Pull our brains, I'll say.
Okay. I'll put that on the agenda for Tuesday.
Yeah.
Added.
It's hard to tell exactly where to go with this with so many unknowns. But.
I think we have to wait until we have more information.
Okay, Bev, but as of right now, everybody's looking at the budget, so nobody spotted anything that they absolutely disagree with. But we recognize we might have to make some hard choices, like we always go through that process of.
Right.
Doing what we need to do. Is there anything else we can do tonight?
So next week, next week, Joe Spurgeon is supposed to come. He's the broker. Do you still want him to come next week to go over the health insurance? Um, and what's the plan and what's going, where we were and what's going on forward?
Uh, I never wanted him to come, but, uh, I. Somebody else will.
If you could, the numbers.
I couldn't hear you, Jeff.
If, if, uh, Bev can just give us the numbers, that would be fine. I don't know that we act, actually have to hear the gentleman explain it.
Yeah, he's just gonna give the history about where we were going forward and, you know, I mean, if you wanna not have it, that's fine. Um, I can just give you the update with the numbers and Mark and I and Maria can explain what's, what's been decided at the two meetings on Monday and Tuesday.
Does anybody have any objection? I, maybe we should still do it, but table it until after the budget, sometime after the budget is finalized. It doesn't necessarily have to be part of the budget process.
That's true.
That's true.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll cancel them for next week.
Yeah.
And then tell them later on, we may have them come in another time.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. So we're back to the calendar. We'll meet next. On the seventh. Without Joe.
Okay.
Actually, I did have a question about future meetings of Mark. Now, I, I, I've been vaccinated. I suspect other people here have been vaccinated. And I think we can, it's a lot more productive to me in person at the town hall and the conference room. Um, once people get vaccinated and also abide by. The rules, uh, s- social distancing and masks and stuff like that, when can we stop meeting in person rather than doing Zoom meetings?
I'm not positive because the board of selectmen is a smaller group, BIPEC is a bigger group. Cause I'm sure we could easily have social distancing with, with say, seven people in the conference room. Um, BIPEC still might be able to do it. It depends on. How comfortable your members, uh, you do have some younger members that might not be vaccinated, that might need to come in through Zoom. And that equipment is in the room, it's just not set up yet. So I could probably have a clear answer to that during the next meeting, but it would still be a Zoom meeting.
So are we, are we saying that vaccinate, we are putting forth a policy that says vaccination is required for in-person?
I don't think I can do that. I don't think legally.
Yeah, I didn't think, I didn't think so.
Yeah, I just wanna know the comfort level. If someone says, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna. But I, I'm not ready to be being full of people, um, you, you might wanna still come in through Zoom. So it will be a hybrid meeting. That's my goal, is to get to the point where we can do. For those who wanna be in person and those who wanna be Zoom, and we have the equipment. We just have to get IT to, um, complete the setup.
Do we have to be, uh, able to have members of the public attend the meeting?
Yes, that, that's where it gets challenging.
Right, that seems really.
Wait. To Zoom. Tonight, they can be on tonight.
Yeah.
The only difference is the equipment we purchased. Of an owl, and it'll sit in the middle of the conference room, and whoever talks will go up on the screen as if they're on Zoom. So whether you're public or a member at home on a computer or a member of a conference room. It'll still be the same effect on the TV screen. And we have a, a large TV monitor in the conference room now.
Can we ask the audience of citizens, not the, uh, BIPEC members? Can we ask them to, to be only on Zoom or do we, uh, have to invite them to be part of the meetings? If they want to.
Well, and that's where, that's where you get into a problem. Wanna say, no, the public has to come into Zoom. Go up for that, look, you're, you're not having a meeting. Just as easily too, if you tried to have a hybrid meeting. Uh, you're not in person yet, right, Maria? You're still by Zoom only?
At the moment, yes.
We're figuring all this as we go still.
So this is something that we can talk about at next meeting and some, and time, make a decision to. Do hybrid type thing if we're comfortable with it.
Okay. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Everybody moved to adjourn, so meeting ended. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.